Want to thank you and praise you for all the blessings, God, that you've put on us, our families, our county. But, God, we pray tonight, God, that you would be with this group of men, that you would give us knowledge and wisdom to try our best, God, to make decisions for this county, to move this county forward. Pray, God, that you'd be with each and every one in this room tonight as we go home, God, when we adjourn, that you'd keep your protective hand over us. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Attention.
Salute. He blessed.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like for you to silence your phones or put them on airplane mode, please. Like to welcome everyone to the Chilton County Commission Meeting, January night, two thousand and twenty-four. This meeting is called Order. I need a motion that we approve the agenda.
Make a motion we approve the agenda.
Second.
Any deletions or additions?
We have omit hiring Brittany McNeil under the sheriff and consent agenda, add the advertise and hire for a certified assistant engineer and consent agenda, omit hiring Kenneth Tyson, omit letter of intent regarding County Road forty-nine, and add private plot establishment, all under consent.
Okay.
And I'd like to add County Road seven twenty-one, under my name, please.
Any discussions on these additions and deletions? Got a motion. Who made the motion?
Gerald Bone.
Commissioner Bone and a second, Commissioner Williams. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, and I'm sorry, before I go any further, we have everyone present. So, motion carried. Okay. Public comments. Laura Lee Adams.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I will be brief. I feel that I have known some of you all of my life, and some of you I have never had the pleasure of meeting. I am Laura Lee Adams. I teach at Chilton County High School, and I live with my father, Phil Sims, in the home to the left of the new courthouse construction site. As most of you know, our current courthouse was built in nineteen sixty-three. With the possible exception of one, the homeowners within a two-block radius of the courthouse all willingly moved close to the facility of their own accord. I know many of them and have watched in passing as they moved in. And speaking even with one of them today, she stated it was the allure of the old homes that drew most of them there. So, they chose to move close to the courthouse. The homeowners around the new courthouse site are not choosing to move in by the courthouse. I know some of you may be thinking, and I have actually heard the comments, that one of the homeowners, being my dad, sold the land to the county, so he must be okay with it. In actuality, a different family member spearheaded the sale. This family member lives out of town. I, however, live in the residence and will inherit the residence. I plan to live there the rest of my life. We do need a new courthouse. My entire immediate family has worked a combined forty-two years with individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. I commend this group on taking steps to provide a courthouse that is ADA compliant. Do I want the courthouse right next door to me? I do not. But in the event that it is built at the current site, I do have two concerns that I would like to address. First, what will the county do to ensure the privacy of my home and land? Our home sits on a working farm with anywhere from twenty to fifty animals at any given time. We produce over seven hundred lavender plants a year, plus other crops, and we thoroughly enjoy the quiet serenity of our backyard. Second, what will the county do to prevent light trespass? Surprisingly, due to the low level of the facility, the lights from Jeff State do not prevent us from enjoying a beautiful, clear night. In fact, we have turned telescopic photography into profit from our own backyard even since Jeff State was built. It is our request that the county will provide a cement wall at least six feet high between the two properties to protect and ensure our privacy, and use dark skylight features, light placement, and aiming that will ensure there is no light trespass. Again, we are excited about the prospect of a new courthouse. We feel, however, that our privacy, quality of living, and day-to-day operations should not be infringed upon to build said new courthouse. We also feel that there are other, let me say, other pieces of property that might would work better. Thank you for your time. Do any?
Okay. That's a question that you need to address to our public building authority. They are totally in control of building this new courthouse, and the things that you're asking for will be something that they'll have to answer for you.
The building authority?
Yes, ma'am. Public building authority.
Okay.
Contact them through the City Hall.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question, Laura Lee?
Yes.
Did you know anytime in advance of us making the decision to build the courthouse there that this was gonna happen?
Yes. I knew when the land was sold that that was the plan. And I have not said very much, but as I was laying in my bed the other day and saw a tree fall out right outside in my bedroom, it kinda, it kinda hit home.
When this property was being cleared?
Yes. Yes. So, I just feel, you know, there's, there's two residences right on each side of this building, and there's a full neighborhood right behind it. And so, I had nothing to do with the selling of the property. I mean, I was kind of out of that. My family member that worked towards that, the land was to be left to him, and so, that was something that was done without, even though that piece of property where the residence is, is to my inheritance, then that's where I will live. And so, I mean, I would, I would question you all if you would want a courthouse right beside your house. So. Any other?
I still suggest you talk to our public building authority.
I will do that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would it be proper for any of these others who are here, because if we don't, we're gonna hear this again sometime later?
Mr. Abrams has a, as a point that he would like to discuss, that he and I discussed it, but in our break. A valid point.
Me and my wife own ten acres of land right adjacent to it. We built that house about fifteen years ago. I came to Clayton from Huntsville. I was a rocket launching captain firing engineer in Huntsville. I came to, came here to Clayton. Built the business, sold it to the Japanese four, five years ago. Great place to live. Built this house that I live in right now. Bought it, ten acres. Thought it was home. Monday morning, last Monday, I heard these chainsaws crank off. This was around five thirty in the morning. Next thing I know, trees begin falling. It's the damnedest thing I ever witnessed in one day. I was never notified. I was never asked. I was never told. No one said anything to me and my wife. Why?
That's up to the public building authority.
And I'm sorry, but I don't know who they are. I don't know how to get to it. You want me to run over and ask somebody?
You can contact them through the mayor's office at the city.
What gives you the authority to emboss yourself into my neighborhood, depreciate my property like you did? And I'm talking about everyone that voted for it.
That wouldn't necessarily be the public building authority, Ms. Chairman. I might correct that. This commission bought the property and decided to build it out there.
That's true. The commission bought the property, but then we've turned the building all over to the public building authority.
The building, but the other part falls on us. We were elected and we decided to build it out there.
There's no, there's no.
Not one person said one word to me. And I pay taxes. I pay heavy taxes. And, and have been a good citizen, me and my wife both. Why are we treated this way? Why am I eighty-two years old and fixing to lose my house? My house is paid for, but my home, the one we built, after we sold a successful business that competed on the world market, we thought we found home, but I don't reckon we did.
Well, I'm sorry, sir, for all your inconvenience.
So, we're in the way. So, what you gonna do about it? You're gonna use the vote.
Sir, I'm not here to argue with you, and I won't allow you to argue. You're not even on the agenda.
I'm not arguing. I'm just making a point. What, what do I do? With a million-dollar house out there that's gonna be sitting right beside a financed courthouse. My house is paid for, everything.
Okay. We gotta move on.
Is that it?
Yes.
I guess we'll have to go see someone else then.
That's your.
If you were in my house, what would you say?
Nothing.
Nothing?
No, ma'am.
Come on now.
No, ma'am.
Nobody said one word to any of us. There wasn't ever even a rezoning sign put on that property. Don't it have to be rezoned?
How, how do y'all have that much authority?
You'll have to ask the city about the zoning, ma'am. That property's in the city limits. The county is not zoned at all. You'll have to ask the city about the zoning.
Just, your problem, my problem, our problem. Thank you for nothing.
Mr. Chair President Bass, say just two quick things.
Yes, ma'am.
I had, one of the, my name is Anna Adams. That's my mom. I had one of the county commissioners sit at my kitchen table and tell me that all the architecture said that the only land that would work for the courthouse sat in between two residential homes. Then I also heard from another commissioner that that wasn't actually the case, that there was an architecture that said that there was another property that would work. And so, I'm just curious what the actual truth is, because I've been told two different things.
Well, I'm the first commissioner to speak to you, so where's the property you're referring to?
The old Adair.
It wouldn't work on there. No, ma'am.
Did one of the architectures tell you?
Oh, yes, it would.
No, it wasn't. The architects.
Listen, we're not here to argue about where would work and where would not work.
I'm on the address this, though, because I am the commissioner. I am the commissioner that sit at her table with this lady right here, and neither one of them had a problem with it to start with, as long as there was a buffer. But now, all of a sudden, we have a problem. That's the problem I got right now. Okay? It wasn't a problem the day you asked me for a three-acre buffer, and I said we would look into that.
Did we get an answer tonight about a concrete wall?
I'm sorry.
No, ma'am.
That ain't what you said. You said a three.
I just wanted to know.
We will take that into consideration, but we can't.
And then, did you all consider any land beside your homes?
Again, you didn't have a problem with it as long as you got a three-acre buffer. Now, it's a problem.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, but I can't consider land beside my home, because I live outside the city limits.
It's amazing how it works. Moving on along.
And it's federal law. A courthouse has to be in the city limits. So.
Well, let me say, we, we have a problem with it. When we were in discussion, we were willing to buy at least three acres right there, and we never said we were okay with the courthouse being there.
You said you.
We were wanting to buy three acres of land from y'all once you got that piece of land. So, no, it's not. I don't think anybody would want a courthouse right beside their house. And why I came tonight, and, and, you know, it's, it's, I don't, I'm not gonna, I don't wanna fight a battle over whether the courthouse is there or not. If it ends up being there, we want some things.
How is our privacy gonna be protected?
Well, that's what she addressed tonight.
That's what she addressed, and we will take that into consideration. We'll talk to our building authority about that and see what kind of suggestions they have.
Great. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
What about my side? No one even picked up the phone and called us. What about our side?
Why, why, why did that happen? We were never asked nor notified. Talk about abuse.
Sir, I, I'll be honest with you, sir. I'll be honest with you. I can't answer that, why you was never notified. I don't, I don't know. I'm the chairman now.
Send out an investigator and find out how, how.
Okay.
No one, nothing. We didn't even get a notice, nothing, until we heard trees falling.
Okay. Well, we gotta move on with this meeting.
Well, I'll prepare one thing.
We'll check into, we'll, we'll check into this stuff and we'll, we'll do some.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes, sir.
How would you feel, like last Monday morning, I got a chainsaw running, a equipment running? You haven't received not one word. Nobody's told you anything.
Well, sir, I can't answer that, because here's why I can't answer it. I was raised out in the country, and I'm not used to living in a rural area where things like that happen. I've never had to go through this, so I don't know, because out in the country where I live, neighbors don't get permission from the other neighbors to do anything on their land. So, I, I mean, I, I don't mean that to be blunt or ugly, but I, I can't put myself in your shoes, because I've never been there. I don't know what it is to live in a rural area.
We're not talking about neighbors here. We're talking about the Chilton County.
I know.
The whole county.
Well, I think you would find that there's no law that anybody has to inform anybody of what they do on their land in Chilton County.
You're in the city.
This is the city. You gotta ask the city those questions.
That's correct.
See.
But yet, you're operating independently within the city limits, right?
No.
No.
Well, I mean, it's your courthouse.
The courthouse will be owned by the city of Clayton and their public building authority until the bonds are paid for. So, they're, they're, they're in, they're in charge of, they, they will own the land and the building, and they're, they will be in charge of.
So, they're financing the county?
No, sir. Bonds are financing the county that are issued through the public building authority, but we will not take ownership of that building for thirty years.
Would you like to just do whatever you want to about?
Moving on, Ms. Chairman.
We gotta move on, ma'am. You have to go talk to the city. Okay. Gets us to the consent agenda. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve, approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
All right. That consists of the minutes of December twelfth, twenty-three, claims list, January ninth, of twenty-four. The sheriff's department, the commission department, road department. And that's, that's it. Any questions to be asked about the consent agenda? If not, we have a motion. Commissioner Parnell.
Second.
I'm, I'm motion.
Commissioner Hardy made the motion. Commissioner Parnell seconded. All in favor to approve the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
So carried. All right. The elected officials, the sheriffs, was that put into consent agenda?
That's what I was trying to ask you, when you.
Okay. Sheriff's requested a resolution to consider the two legislative bill proposals for collecting the motor vehicle impoundment fee and the credit or debit card purchases and procedures.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
They gotta be separate.
Is that two separate things being that we gotta do?
It does not have to be a consent one motion. Just sort of like your consent agenda, you can move a number of items at once with one motion, but or you can trigger the sentence.
Okay. We have a motion. Oh, Mr. Bone, or you second. Mr. Hardy made the motion.
I made a motion. He made a second.
Mr. Bone made the second. Now, is any discussion?
No, I just.
Okay. All in favor of, of this? No, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So carried. Staff report?
Yes, we've been asked to bring for you the severe weather preparedness tax holiday. Do we have a resolution?
I think we need to make it known, we can't do this because of complicated tax county and city on this.
Oh, yeah.
And so, it does, we don't need this to come up every time of these tax holidays.
What we need is a resolution that we're not gonna exempt taxes for going forward, and then it won't come back up.
I move we don't exempt taxes for these holiday, tax holidays, due to the fact of our complicated sales tax system.
Got a motion on the floor?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Williams seconded. Commissioner Parnell, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Can I read that back to you?
Yes, please.
The resolution is to not exempt tax holidays due to the tax complexity of the county?
Complicated tax, sales tax system.
Complicated sales tax system. Glad to read.
And just for the public, there's some of our taxes that we are bound by law and can exempt. So, if we were to pass one of these tax holidays, that makes business owners find themselves in a position where they don't know what sales tax to pay. And there's all kinds of penalties involved in that. And none of their tax people can advise them on those things, because they don't know what law, what taxes we have that can't be exempt. For instance, the education tax cannot be exempted.
That's right.
And when, when you exempt part of your tax and not all of your tax, it puts small business owners and all business owners in a terrible place as far as reporting, where the penalties can be greater than the actual tax themselves for, for miscalculating.
That is correct.
So, next year when I review this, I should basically copy that resolution and just send it back with another reply.
Okay. Is it all you got?
Yes.
Okay. Old Business. Any discussion on the Old Business meeting times, timber harvesting?
I think we could remove timber harvesting, because it's being, being done or has been done.
Okay.
I'll bring it up on to me.
Any more discussion on any of the other incentives and appropriations? Still working on, okay. All right. Commission reports. Commissioner Bone.
No, sir.
Commissioner Hardy.
No, sir.
Commissioner Headley.
No, sir.
Commissioner Mims.
No, sir.
Commissioner Parnell.
No, sir.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes. Talked with the, a deck of the day, and the only update, I thought maybe I'd have some kind of an update on the broadband, but all they can tell me, it's in process. The Theds threw them a curveball with some change in the middle of the process, and something's changed. She said, hoped she'd have an answer in a month or so, but right now, it's just in process.
So, are they gonna put it back out for proposal again, or are they gonna take the proposal they have? You don't know?
It's in process. I wish I could've got a better answer and something a little more definitive, but it's in process.
Typical government answer.
Okay.
Do we know anymore on County Road seven twenty-one being, or is it still in the judge's hand?
Still, still on the agenda.
Okay. I'm having a hard time with this meeting time. Commissioner Bone asked me about it when it was under Old Business, but I already had it down. It's kinda ironic to me, like when Chairman Kelly says it's time for the meeting. Well, how do you know? We don't have a time set time for our meeting. And I think it's confusing to people. They, if they get on the agenda for the meeting, what time do you tell them to be here? You have a time when they call you and ask you, Ms. Thifft, you can't tell them the time.
I saw like it was, like it was full of changes. You know what time the meeting starts. You know what time the work session starts.
I think it's, you know, it may not be legal, but I think it's gonna be pretty close. You need to have a meeting time for an official meeting. I liked it better Monday night. I didn't like two nights, but I think it was better to have a time for the meeting to start.
Commissioner Williams, before we went to the Monday night meetings, and, and we've done it several times in between, we had a five o'clock work session and a six o'clock meeting. And I know we have some issues with people with their jobs not being able to be here at five, but what if we did, you know, a hard six-thirty start, and you did a five-thirty work session? Could everybody make it by five-thirty?
No, because that Commissioner Bone works till six.
Well, we had discussed this in another meeting, Commissioner Williams, but we, I don't think we put anything in writing that we would say that we cut the work session off, seven o'clock sharp and start the meeting at seven o'clock. But I don't think we put anything in writing about that. Now, if, if we need that, if we need a time, and I can see your point, it's up to you commissioners on about the meeting times, the meeting days.
Being said during our, we had the public hearing.
I like the one-night deal, but that's just, that's just what I prefer. But I, you know, I'm flexible.
Oh, I don't mind a one-night. I just think we ought to have a set meeting time. The night we had the public hearing, the second one.
I like just having our work session from five to six, and the meeting starting at six. I mean, I, I don't, I mean.
Being said, you can have, like, the night of the public hearing, we could recess the work session and have the public hearing. We can recess a work session and go into the meeting at a specified time, and if we need to talk about something later in the work session, during the meeting, we can go into a work session. But one of the points been made to me by a couple of people, what we discuss in the work session is right there on the consent agenda, nine times out of ten, and it's voted on anyway. So, we can, we can have the meeting, and we can discuss that same stuff in the meeting and carry on with the business. I don't have a problem with one night.
We, we have a standing resolution, and any resolution can be changed, but we have a standing resolution that says we can't vote on anything that hasn't been discussed in a work session. So, that's kind of the, why do we do all this? Now, if we were to set meeting times, we could very easily, I say easily, because it's not on me, it'd be on our chairman, work through that work session in a more timely manner than what we're doing, where we hold the allotted timeframes as outlined in our meeting setup, you know, where you've got three to five minutes to discuss whatever topic, and you move on, and you make sure you're done. But, you know, the, the problem, if you, if you say we're gonna have a six o'clock meeting and, or a six o'clock work session and a seven o'clock meeting, is on those off nights where you only have fifteen minutes of things to discuss, then you gotta sit here for forty-five minutes before you can start the meeting. And I, I'll work with whatever the consensus of this, this body is, but, you know, we, we, we change those meeting times to accommodate at least two commissioners that had conflicts with their jobs where they could not be at the work sessions. So, if we're gonna do it, we need to at least do six and seven to facilitate their ability to be here.
Yeah. That's what I advocated the first night. We were sworn in.
Messed up with that, and we'll change it something else. I mean, we'll know what times the meeting is and what it consists of before they get you ready.
Well, I advocated six and seven the very first night we were sworn in, because of Commissioner Bone's issue. His shift don't end till six o'clock.
I have no problem with us putting a resolution in, work session at six, meeting at seven. If we have a work fifteen-minute work session, which we normally don't, we've had some fifteen-minute meetings, but the work sessions normally last about that time. We can cut the work sessions. We can just cut it. Couple of minutes till seven, give somebody a bathroom break and get right into the meeting. If it satisfies everybody better to, to say, okay, we got this specific time, whatever the time be.
Well, I'll throw this out. Some other counties do one meeting a month, and if you had a, a big work session, and two weeks later, you had a meeting, you know, you got the same amount of time, but it may work better to go to one meeting a month.
Can we do that in mid?
There are a lot of things that come up during the two-week period, though, and that's why we've all we've done it the way we have.
We have a lot of special call meetings.
Yeah. Yeah, you're right.
Or is it satisfactory if everybody, if we put in writing, the work session starts at six, and the meeting will start at seven?
Since I brought this up before, we don't have to have a work session. I move that going forward, our work sessions start at six on our scheduled meeting dates, and the meeting begins at seven o'clock promptly.
Okay. We got a motion on the floor. Commissioner Williams, need a second?
Second.
All right. Got Commissioner Headley second. Any more discussion? All right. All in favor of this? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Work sessions will start at six. Meetings will start at seven. Promptly.
Promptly.
Even if we have to cut the work sessions off. Need a motion that we adjourn.
No, I'm not done.
Whoa, whoa, okay. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Williams.
One more, then I gotta clarify.
What? You ain't got it on here.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I asked for it a while ago, but it didn't, I got cut off. I've asked this a couple of times about videoing our work sessions. And is, most of y'all, I think, would readily admit, most of our discussions about what we do and what we vote on is in the work sessions. And I think it'd be beneficial if this body put that out there for the people to see. As I said last time, we have our videographer here anyway, and all it costs us is one click of a mouse. So I move that we video our work sessions.
Got a motion that we video our work sessions. Any second? Motion dies on the floor.
And one clarification, uh, Ms., Ms. Adams brought up the fact of, the only piece of property that was suitable for a courthouse was that property, according to architects. And just one for clarification, the Adair property was said to be suitable for a courthouse by at least one architect firm. Two others said it could be situated there, depending on the wishes of the commission as far as the facility, the way it was built. Now I move we adjourn.
Before you do, I'm gonna address that too. The architect firm that is currently designing this told us right there on that property, would you stand there, this would not be suitable property for the courthouse.
Did I say every architect?
Oh, you like, you said, we're doing clarification, let's be clear.
You have a motion, Jer.
Got a motion, need a second to adjourn? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Needing adjourned. Thank you, guys.